Good morning. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment, virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Bruce Mullack. Panel members this morning are Sahir Bayat, Yim Chan, Peter Reed, and Nimrod Salaman. This will be a virtual public hearing. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event platform that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by computer, phone, or tablet app. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When his or her item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called to speak. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw which apply to property, permission to extend or to alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consents to sever property in order to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision on a particular application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name and address, your email address, because Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email only. You may not agree with the decision of the committee. Decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order that it is listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if so required by the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment as you are approaching the time limit. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and may be asked to make a presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised in order to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support of or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after the speaker has finished their When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will have an opportunity to rebut, but only to those issues and points that were raised by the speakers. And that will mark the end of discussion on that application. It will then be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, have the minutes of the last meeting been confirmed by members?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and panel members. Yes, the minutes from February the 23rd hearing.
Thank you very much. So I'll look to the panel now. We'll need a motion panel, please, to approve those minutes. They are motioned by Mr. Reed, second Mr. Bayat. All in favor, show of hands, please. Motion carried in those minutes are approved. Are there any declarations of interest by panel members or staff on anything on this morning's agenda? Thank you. Hearing none. Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Item number 16, 124 Sellers Avenue. The agent is requesting a deferral in order to have further conversations with community planning staff.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moderator, are you able to have the applicant for number 16 join us?
Hello. Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Could you state your name, please?
Richard Ramlogan.
And Richard, could you please tell the committee the reasoning behind your request to defer?
Basically, the staff report just came out on the 24th to the committee, and basically I didn't have time to review that with planning to try to resolve some issues.
Okay, so let me just get it clear, Richard, because I want to know, is your intention, you want to talk to staff about the report that they issued? Is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Let me ask you this question. Is your intent to simply have discussions with them, or is your intent to revise the application?
To have discussion with them.
Discussions?
Yes.
Panel members, any questions for the applicant? He wants to defer in order to have discussions with staff. Okay, hearing none. Okay, then, at this point, it's up to the panel to decide whether or not we will defer. So there is a request by the applicant to defer. We'll now take this matter panel into committee for a decision. Are there any comments first anyone would like to make with respect to the application? Ms. Yim Chan, go ahead, please.
Yes, if there aren't any other people who oppose the deferral, I mean, the other participants, I think I will agree that the applicant will take some time to sort out some issues with planning.
Okay, any other thoughts? Nimrod, Mr. Salaman, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I don't really see a reason for a deferral if the applicant is not prepared to actually make changes to what is being proposed. If it's simply for discussions, then I don't see a purpose for a deferral.
I'm sorry, actually, I didn't understand.
Excuse me, applicant. This matter is in committee?
Oh, sorry.
The matter is before the committee now. Panel members, any other discussions? And I would just say that I'm tempting to go along with Mr. Salaman's concept that staff have made their recommendation, and just for further discussions, I don't see the point. Ms. Chan, go ahead, please.
Oh, I'm not sure. What I'm saying, maybe you have to give the chance for the applicant to respond to what we just made assumption on. I do not think that he said he will not make changes, but the purpose is for discussions. But after the discussion, he might, I think, there might be some changes. He's just saying he's not, he does not know, he hadn't read the report in detail.
Okay. Okay, then. If there are no further comments, then I'd look to panel for a motion, please. Mr. Bayat, go ahead.
Just for clarification, the staff report recommends refusal. If it's refused, I'm trying to figure out what would be the difference between, the impact actually between the refusal and a deferral for the application itself. What would it mean?
Well, from a staff point of view, there's more time to be expended on the application, is there not?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If you were to refuse the application, then the applicant would be in a position to appeal that application to T-Lab. The deferral would just allow more time for discussion and consideration of revisions.
Thank you for that, and I think in that event, I would be inclined to supporting a deferral.
Are you ready to make a motion?
Certainly, I would move to defer the application.
Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded, Ms. Chan. So moved and seconded to defer the application. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And those opposed, show of hands, please. So the motion is carried to defer, and let the record show that Mr. Salaman and Mr. Mullack were in dissent on that vote. Thank you. And, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, are there any applications to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Item number 17, 837 Dundas Street West.
Okay, panel members, number 17, a request has come in to simply close the matter off. The applicant no longer wishes to go ahead with the development. So I would need a simple motion on this to close the file. Mr. Reed?
Motion to close.
Thank you. Second to that motion, please. It is seconded, Mr. Bayat. All in favor, show of hands. And that vote is carried to approve the motion and withdraw the application. Thank you. So now we'll go back to our morning agenda, starting with number one. And on this application, the committee has before it the following materials, those submitted by the applicant. There's an arborist report from Wesley Sutherland. There's a planning rationale from the agent, November, and presentation material from the agent from February 23. There is a staff report from Urban Forestry, and there is correspondence in support from 13 Tyndale Avenue, and also from 23 and 27 Springhurst Ave. So, Moderator, we shall ask you, please, to have the applicant join us. The applicant, you can't reach the applicant.
Good morning, members of committee. My name is Tyler Peck from WND Associates. We're the applicants and planners for the application.
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is on the line. I wasn't able to reach Angelina Lopez-Frank, who is the interested speaker. So through you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is on the line, the agent is on the line. I wasn't able to reach Angelina Lopez-Frank, which is the interested speaker.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, panel, for your information, the agent is with us on the line, but the person who had registered to speak in opposition, we haven't been able to contact. Okay, then. Good morning, agent.
Good morning. I'm able to provide a brief presentation if the committee desires.
Thank you very much. I'll just check with them.
Or proceed to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right, panel members, would we like a presentation on this application?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, light breaking developments, the person who was registered to speak in opposition has been able to join us now. So that being the case, yes, Mr. Peck, I will ask you, please, to make a brief presentation.
Certainly. Thank you to members of the committee. This application is for replacement to the existing two-story detached house and the construction of a new three-story detached house with associated front and rear yard landscaping, including a rear deck, and the construction of a rear detached garage with access from the existing public lane. The application meets the four tests for minor variance as outlined in the planning rationale which accompanied the application, and I'll provide a summary of that for the committee members this morning. The proposed variances are outlined in the presentation materials provided to the committee, and those demonstrate three main things. The proposed building height is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, with neighboring houses that also exceed 10 meters in height. Visual impacts are mitigated through a sensitive design and sloped portions of the roof in the front and a setback at the rear. The proposed west side yard setback and setback from the central line of the lane are comparable to the existing condition and provide sufficient building separation between the proposal and the adjacent house to the west across the lane, as well as allowing for a greater building setback to the immediately adjacent neighbor to the east. Transportation services previously, and actually back in March of 2021, confirmed they have no objection to the variance with respect to the setback from the laneway. The floor area of the proposed detached garage maintains the rear yard landscaping requirements of the lot and provides for an appropriately located and sized garage adjacent to neighboring garages which also share the existing public lane. The proposal conforms to the official plan's neighborhoods policies, maintaining the existing lot size, pattern, location, and orientation on the lot, provides a three-story detached house which is consistent with the character of nearby residential properties, provides a sensitively designed house with a building height, as noted before, which is compatible, and the third floor setbacks from both the front and rear, with the front and rear main walls meeting the bylaw requirements under 7.5 meters. The density is compliant with the building, sorry, with the zoning regulations, as well as the building length and depth requirements. The detached garage is in a compatible location. The general intent and purpose of the bylaw is maintained by mitigating impacts to, visual impacts to nearby properties. It's demonstrated in the support letters from the neighboring properties and those across, and one from across the street. The proposed building height allows for two above-grade floors and a usable partial third floor with, as I mentioned, the rear main walls less than 7.5 meters at the front and rear of the building. The height peak and the portions of the side main walls at 10.85 meters are limited to the center of the proposed house, again mitigating visual impacts from both the street and the rear of the property. The proposed setback allows for a sufficient building separation, and it's, I would note that portions of the existing building, bay and box windows are actually located closer to the lot line and center line of the lane than the proposed development. The proposed area of the detached garage allows for two vehicular parking spaces, storage area, and circulation, and is usable, and has been located away from the existing tree in the rear of the property. Careful consideration has been given to the design, and the requested relief will not result in negative impacts to adjacent properties with respect to light, privacy, views, or overlooked conditions, and the building fits within the neighborhood context. I would just conclude by noting that the requested variances are minor increases or diversions from the bylaw, allowing for a functional house and detached garage on the lot. Just reiterating that we've confirmed with both City Planning and Transportation Services, they have no objection to the application. As you know, there are three letters of support on file. My clients, Arborists, have already been working with Urban Forestry with respect to the tree permits for injury. We don't object to the requested condition. So I respectfully request committee's approval of the application, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Okay, then, let's have the registered speaker who's standing by join us, please. Please state your name as you do.
This is Angelina Lopez-Frank.
Good morning to you. Okay, Angelina, you have five minutes. You have five minutes to address your concerns to the panel.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for waiting for me this morning.
Hi, Angelina. We're just receiving a bit of lag where the signal is cutting off.
Angelina? Yep, we're not hearing you clearly.
Actually, just had a question regarding the detached, because in the plans, my rear fence...
Okay. So, Angelina, if you're having difficulty hearing you, what I will do is give you a call at the number you have provided, so just have your handheld device ready.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Angelina.
Is this better?
That's just fine. If you just keep talking like that, we'll do fine, yes. We can hear.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, everyone, for waiting for me this morning. I work in a basement. I think that's what my connectivity issues are. I had a question regarding the detached garage. My rear fence would be up against where the garage is, and I can't tell in the plans what the distance is from my fence to the garage, especially in regards to the tree.
Okay, now, is that your, that's your only concern about the application?
Yes.
And can you give us any idea about the impacts that those distances? From what you can see on the drawing, what would the impact be on you?
That's what I don't know, because I don't know what the distance is from the garage from the fence. Is it going directly up against the fence? Is it setback from the fence?
Okay, then, but we'll see what the applicant has to say with respect to those questions.
Sorry, Angelina, please state your address.
24 Tri-A Street.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's go back, then, to the agent.
Good morning. I'm happy to answer the question of Ms. Lopez-Frank. The garage is setback .6 meters from the fence to the east, which abuts the properties to the east and would have brought about her property. That's a bylaw-compliant setback, and the garage height also is bylaw-compliant at four meters. The garage has been purposely set back more than two meters from the rear property line as well, and that's to enable for, obviously, the tree preservation of the existing tree to the rear. So to answer the question, it's a .6 meter setback, which is a bylaw-compliant setback for the detached garage.
Thank you very much. Okay. Panel members, any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Let's take this application into panel for a motion. Are there any comments first by panel members? Mr. Reed, go ahead.
No comments. I was going to bring a motion. If anyone else has comments, feel free to step in. I think this is a really well-designed application, and I think that it really fits in with the neighborhood, I think, in stepping back on the third floor, both from the front and the rear, lessens the impact. Plus, I appreciate the effort that the applicant has gone to, to make, you know, as just described, the setbacks for the garage and the height of the garage compliant. So I think this is well-considered and is a very reasonable application, and it is minor. So I move to approve subject to Urban Forestry, Condition 3.
Thank you very much, and that is seconded by Ms. Chan. So moved and seconded to approve, subject to forestry. All those in favor, show of hands, please. And the motion is carried. The application is approved. Thank you. And the panel moves on to application number two. On application number two, the materiel's before us include a staff report from Community Planning, received February the 28th. There are those materials submitted by the applicant, cover letter from the agent. There is a 2015 Committee of Adjustment decision which affects the property. Transportation rationale is provided by BA Consulting from June last year, and is referenced to a specific bylaw. We also have comments from Heritage Preservation and Community Planning. So let's have the applicant join us, please, for 501 Young Street, application number two.
Hi, Sedonia, you've been unmuted.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, it's Sedonia Tomasella Verdenberlis on behalf of 501 Young Developments Limited.
Good morning to you. Okay, I'm just going to check with panel members. Panel members, any requests here for a presentation or any questions to put right to the applicant? I'm hearing none. No, I'm not hearing any. In that case, we can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Thanks. I think the letter from the applicant was very helpful in outlining what they were, what they were going for here, and I think this is a reasonable use that they're considering, given the kind of, the constraints of the site with the subway going through it. And I think that the community planning comments and recommended conditions make sense in terms of limiting any, any potential negative impacts of this. So I move to approve the application subject to the community planning condition.
Thank you very much. And there is a second to that. Mr. Bayat seconds. So it is moved and seconded to approve. All in favor, show of hands. And that motion receives a unanimous vote to carry the motion and approve the application. Thank you. Number three is 414 Margarita Street. On this particular application, the only materiel's before the panel are those submitted by the applicant. So let's have the applicant join us, please.
Henriques. Good morning. My name's Tony Henriques. I'm the applicant for this application.
Good morning to you. Okay, Tony, I'm going to check with panel members to see if they have any questions for you. Any questions, panel? No, there are no questions, no requests for presentation. So, Tony, is there anything you wish to say, you know, any one thing we should know about your application before we go ahead on this?
The only one thing is that this application was actually approved back in 2002, but the owner forgot to or didn't know he needed a building permit. So when he got approval from the committee, he thought he was fine, and how the inspector came back and said, "No, you didn't get a permit." And when I applied for a permit, I realized that the bylaw has changed, and that's what brings us back here.
Thanks for that little bit of information. That helps. Okay. Okay, we're now going into committee with the application for a motion, please. Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to move for approval, because I think that in that area, this kind of adding extra secondary street is quite common, and I think that is well-served by public transit and everything. So I move for approval with no condition.
Thank you. That motion is seconded, Mr. Bayat. So moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands. The motion is... The motion is carried, and application number three is approved. Thank you. On application number four, there is a staff report from TRCA received on the 24th of February before us, and also before us are applicant's materials. There's a revised site plan, a revised zoning notice, 23 February, cover letter from the agent, arborist report, presentation materials from agent. There's a shadow study from the agent, February the 2nd. In terms of city comment, we have urban forestry and TRCA. And there is correspondence in support from 23 Minto. Yep, I'm assuming that's the house next door. So we shall ask the applicant or agent to join us, please.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Paige Reisha from Bloom Inc. at 222 The Espinaw, Toronto, Ontario. I'm the designer and the applicant.
Good morning to you. Okay, panel members, any questions for the agent, any requests for a presentation? Mr. Salomon, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, was there any changes to any of the variances that are shown? I thought there was some revision to variance number 11.
Yes, so number 11 was revised on February 23rd. We spoke with planning, and they recommended we reduce the size of the shed, so we did that, and we had a zoning notice reissued as well.
And so I guess, what is the new numbers, just so that we have that then?
Yep, so it's 20% versus, I think it was 29% before, sorry, 23%.
So in number 11, we're just gonna capture this now for sure, number 11, the lot coverage of the rear ancillary building will be 20% of the lot area. Do you know what, can you give us that 20% in square meters, please?
Yep, it's 29.3.
Would you say that again, please?
29.3 square meters.
Very good, okay. Staff have captured that. We're in good shape to proceed. Thank you for the question, Mr. Salomon.
And so just as a follow-up, does that affect any of the other proposed variances, like setbacks?
No, everything else is the same.
Thank you.
All right, then, panel, we can take this into committee for a motion, please.
Just, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Chan.
Yes, so just follow up the same question. So the revised plan today reflected this change of variance number 11?
That's correct.
It reflects, okay, thank you.
It is changed to 20%, that's what we're dealing with. Okay, Mr. Salomon, go ahead, please.
So I just wanted to confirm, are we in committee now?
We are in committee now, ready to make a motion, yes.
Okay, then, I'm happy to make a motion. I just wanna note, this is a very narrow lot, and although there are quite a few variances, I think they're reflective of the lot size, and I believe they are minor in nature, and I would move approval of the variances subject to urban forestry condition number one.
Thank you very much. And that motion, I, Ms. Chan, you're seconding?
As amended.
Okay.
Yes, as amended.
As amended, very good. Seconded by Ms. Chan, so moved and seconded to approve as amended. All those in favor, subject, sorry, subject to forestry. All those in favor, show of hands, please, and that motion is carried by a unanimous vote. The application is approved. We move on to number five, 33 Roxborough Street East. On this application, we have 10 photographs of the subject property received 24 February. There's an arborist report from Davy Resource Group. There's a tree protection plan from Davy Resource. There's a sketch of the east elevations and a staff report from Heritage Preservation. Also before us are those applicants originally submitted by the applicant, correspondence sent to the neighbors on February 11, a staff report from Heritage Preservation 25 February, and in support, we have a total of two form letters, one from 32 Roxborough and the other from 38 Crescent Road. With that, we'll ask the applicant, please.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Simon Rollins. My address is 8 Pretoria Avenue, and I'm representing the owners of 33 Roxborough Street East.
Thank you very much. Good morning, agent. Okay, panel members, any questions for the agent? Anyone requiring a presentation? Mr. Salomon, go ahead.
My question is relating to the third-story rear terrace. Are there, is there any privacy screening on the sides of that?
Yes, we have 1.5-meter privacy screens on both the east and west side.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the agent? No. Hearing none, then, we can take the application into committee for a motion. Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Thanks. I think this is a reasonable application, particularly in the context of its neighborhood. There's been a lot of very large additions or new builds, and I think this is, strikes a balance between what's there and what's newly there. I think the variances are small and their effect is minor, so I would move approval of the application subject to the heritage condition.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Ms. Chan.
Privacy screen, are we going to put that as condition? Or are they already being proposed?
I think they're in the plans already, but if you want, we can just add it as a condition. We could say plus a condition for third-story rear balcony, east and west.
Privacy screen.
So it's up to 1.5-meter privacy screen.
Okay. So that's the motion as amended. Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded, Mr. Byatt. So moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor of the amended motion, show of hands, please. And that vote is carried unanimously to carry the motion as amended and to approve the application. Thank you. We move on to number six, which deals with 309 Logan Avenue. On 309 Logan, panel has before it the applicant's submission. There is a revised site plan, cover letters from the agent, January and February, email correspondence from the agent 23 February. There is a MetroLink's corridor development permit affecting the property. And there is correspondence in support, total of six form letters, 311, 325 Logan, 36 Colgate, 22 and 28 Natalie Street, and also 307 Logan. Okay, then, on this application, we shall now ask the agent to join us, please. State your name.
Good morning, Graham Barrett, agent for the owners of 309 Logan.
Good morning. Okay, panel, here's your chance. Any questions for the agent? Hearing none, hearing, hearing none, we can then take the application into committee for a motion. Mr. Salomon, go ahead. Mr. Salomon?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to unmute myself there. The proposal is to enclose a third-story rear terrace. It really adds only a small amount of actual GFA. There are only two variances, and I believe they're minor, so I would move approval with no conditions.
Thank you. That is seconded by Mr. Reed. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Okay, motion carried, unanimous vote, and the application is approved. Number seven is 84 Gothic Avenue. And 84 Gothic brings before the panel the applicant's submission materials, a cover letter from September from the agent. There is a geotechnical engineering feasibility study prepared by Jory Hunter and Jason Crowder of Grounded Engineering, September. There is correspondence from urban forestry, support from 82 and 88 Gothic in the form of form letters, and interest or concern expressed in writing from 431 Glen Lake, Malcolm Burrows. So we shall ask the agent now to join us. State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Cox. I'm with MWA Landscape Architects, the agent on the phone.
Good morning to you. Okay. Panel, desire for a presentation or questions for the applicant?
Bruce, I'm not sure if you're speaking, but I don't hear you.
Pardon me, pardon me, I had hit my, put my mic off inadvertently. Question for the agent. Agent, in the letter of concern which committee received, there was concern about trees in the ravine, I think particularly a Norway maple. What comment could you give us about the urban forestry situation?
We've had consultations with Ravine and Natural Feature Protection to come up with a strategy that best suits the rehabilitation of the property, so we are currently in discussion with them to retain all the trees on site. There is one Norway maple that is noted of concern in terms of its location, in terms of being able to get the geotechnical equipment to the site to install the feature. So our current plan is attempt to save it as much as possible. In discussion with Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, they will make the final decision, who said if it is to be removed or not based on its long-term life, and it would be replaced if it was removed with a more native-appropriate species in this setting.
Thanks very much for that, okay. Other questions? Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yes, I have one question. I'd just like to know the existing condition. There's already some sort of retaining wall there already, right? You're gonna just be built and maybe, maybe just sort of update the construction, is that right?
That's correct. There's an existing number of large retaining walls that are in sort of a state of slow failure, and the most appropriate solution for geotechnically is to build a new wall in front of those to minimize the impact to the neighbors as well as the existing slope stability. So the geotechnical has recommended building a new wall in front of it and leaving the existing walls in place, essentially abandoning them behind the new structure. This is, you can see the current state in figure two of the cover letter. That's page three.
Yeah. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
I see, yeah, okay.
Okay, applicant, you can see the photographs that are up now. Does that, anything you want to add to your comments with respect to the photographs? Hello, applicant?
Oh, sorry, yeah, so, yeah, so that you can see here that this is the larger of the retaining wall in figure number two, and then the figure number one is showing the existing condition, as you see on the right of that image, as it meets the neighbors, which will be rectified with the new works.
Panel members, further questions? Hearing none, we can take this application into committee now for a motion, please. Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's just a straightforward application for rebuilding this massive retaining wall, and they're engaging with urban forestry and engineer, engineers or geotechnical engineer. I think it's, I have no problem with this proposal, so I move for approval with forestry condition, yeah, number one, I think.
Okay, I'm sorry, does your, does your motion involve conditions?
Yes, I think it's a forestry condition number one.
Forestry number one, okay, thank you. Okay, got it. Very good. Second to that, Mr. Reed. So it is moved and seconded to approve subject to forestry, number one. Those in favor, show of hands, and that motion does carry unanimous vote. The application is approved subject to forestry. Thank you. We move on to number eight, 325 Strathmore Boulevard. On this application, we have three photographs of the existing rear and ancillary building. We have those are materials submitted by the applicant, and we have commenting reports from city planning, February 23. So we'll ask the agent now to join us, please.
Hi, John, you've been unmuted. You may need to speak just closer to the mic.
All right, hang on, get my tech support representative here.
Nope, you're good.
Oh, okay, morning.
Good morning. Could you state your name, please?
John Mowini.
Good morning, John. So panel members, we have the agent with us now. Would anyone like a presentation? Do you have any questions for the agent? Go ahead.
Yeah, on the planning recommendation that regarding variance number four, is the applicant okay with it?
With which? I'm sorry, didn't you catch that?
Okay, on the planning, on the planning recommendation, they, regarding variance number four, they said that the, at least the, they said the rear yard landscaping at least have to be 25%. So if- soft landscaping. Do, do you think, are you agree with their recommendation? The top, yeah.
Sorry, Lee, is that what we're going for here?
Say again, please.
There was a question for, for my, is the, is it?
The question is for you.
The 25% meaning, oh, for the softscaping, right?
Yeah, 29, yeah.
Yeah, well, right now, there's none. I mean, it's completely paved.
Yes, that's why I, I raised this question. I just like you to respond to that, because we usually take the recommendation for conditions and we consider that in, in our decision.
Okay, well, that's my only response to that, is that I want to put as much green as I can back there, based on there's nothing there right now.
So we can assume that 29% is better than 0%, but is, is it true? It's, it was my sense that the, the extra, on number, variance number three, the 43.9, basically the four meters squared that you're asking in ancillary building floor area, that four meters squared is being taken from the soft landscaping potential? Is that, is that true?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. But you, you are, you are going to remove all of the, the hard landscape, the hardscape back there and replace it with soft?
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there further questions for the applicant panel? Hearing none, then we can take this application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
I think that the variances are minor. I believe this is going to be an improvement in terms of the rear yard soft landscaping from what is there today. And so I would move approval, subject to community planning conditions.
There we are. And that is seconded by Mr. Byatt. So moved and seconded to approve, subject to community planning. All in favor? Show of hands. A unanimous vote carries that motion, and the application is so approved. Thank you. Application number nine, 34 Madison Avenue. On this application, we have the applicant's materials. We have an arborist report, November. Presentation materials from the agent, February. And there is correspondence and comment from Transportation Services on 16 Feb. and 20, and 17 Feb. And also from Community Planning, 24th of February. In support, correspondence from 149 Lothar, 8D Spadina Road, and a 10 signature petition in support from the owners of properties on Madison and, and also the occupants of properties on Madison and Lothar. Okay, received just yesterday, apparently. Okay, very good.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Staff received two very late correspondence. One from Heritage Planning requesting refusal, or if the committee is to approve the application, that there would be a condition tied to the approval. And then we also received a mutual access agreement from the applicant.
A mutual access agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and Heritage recommended refusal?
Yes, I just, I'm having staff put that on the screen, so that...
We'll just take a moment here, panel, to put up the heritage report.
And also, the, uh...
Go ahead, Ms. Chan.
It was mentioned, yeah, it was mentioned that if we approve, there's a condition. Where's, what is the, where's the condition?
So it's under the recommendation? It reads, should the Committee of Adjustment approve the requested variances? Then the following condition. Right, the highlighted section.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. All right, then, other, okay, thank you for that, that's important, we know about that. Panel members, questions for the agent, please? Go ahead. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if the agent can respond to community planning reports, and specifically, if they're able to show how are, how is that north parking space going to be accessed?
Okay, agent, that question is for you. I'm sorry, maybe, perhaps we hadn't brought the agent into the conversation room, for which I apologize. Okay, so let's just, let's just step back. Do we have the agent or the owners with us?
Yes, I am here, can you hear me?
I do hear you, please state your name.
Hi, my name's Deborah Scott from Scott Shields Architects. We are the agent and the architects. Our address is 317 King Street West.
Good morning to you, and my apology for not bringing you in yet. I should have brought you into the conversation before we began to address questions to you.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, we do have a question for you. We were not going to necessarily require a presentation, but there are questions from panel members. So, Mr. Solomon, may I ask you to repeat your question, please?
Yeah, sure. So I'm wondering if the applicant can respond back to community planning report, in which they asked for a deferral and to, so that you can show how that north proposed parking space is actually going to be accessed?
Yes, I'm happy to address that, thank you. We got in touch, or the neighbors to the north, number 36 Madison, got in touch with us on Thursday. We had a little trouble finding each other, because they have a commercial property, and this is a commercial property. So the second thing you received late this morning is the mutual access agreement with the neighbors to the north. And there is a mutual access agreement, so that we can gain access using their, their curb cut and across their driveway to our parking space to the north. We also, in this mutual access, what, we're number 34, they're number 36, they need access to their parking in the back. So that's the other half of the mutual access agreement. So we have successfully done that with them. And I can show you a, a, you know, maneuvering diagram, which the community planner asked for, to show how we're getting into that north parking space. It's, it's quite easy, you use their driveway and you turn into it, to the left.
Further questions, panel, for the agent? Ms. Chan, go ahead, please.
Yes, my question is, it seems that Heritage is concerned about the front yard parking. My question is, if you do not get the front yard parking approved, will that affect the function or the requirement of the daycare?
Thank you for asking that question. We only request one variance right now, and it's to put two parking spaces in the front yard. That's the only variance. The reason we can't put the parking in the backyard is because we want this to be a licensed daycare under the early, the Province Early Childhood Act. To do licensed daycare, we need all of the backyard for the outdoor play area, which must be on the site for the children. This, we are allowed by zoning to do a daycare, but if we want it licensed, we have to not put the two parking spaces in the backyard. So we thought it appropriate to put them in the front yard, which is why you have that one requested variance. Now Heritage called me on Monday, two days ago, and said they had just received this, and under the Madison Avenue Heritage Conservation District, they don't want parking in the front. And I said, oh, okay, well, there is lots of parking in the front. You've seen in your package, we have did a survey, there's a lot of parking in the front. And historically, there's been parking in the front for 35 years. But to be specific to your question, we don't need parking. I mean, if, we, we would have deferred this, but we thought it, but this was just happened on Monday, and we thought it was a good idea to have a conversation with the committee. We really, if we defer this, we're going to then apply to have no parking, like, remove the two parking spaces. And we just want to make sure that we get approved, one way or the other. You either, with, with all due respect, please approve us for the two parking spaces out front. And we've got lots of support from the neighbors. Please approve it for that, and we will work with Heritage if we do approve this. We're not doing anything to the, to the building itself. And if you prefer that we defer it, because you think it best that we have no parking, then I understand the notices have to be sent out again to the neighbors, and we will have to come back, and I think it would be made to this committee to have you approve this with no parking. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry it's so long, my answer.
You, you, you have, and also, you also have made it very clear that it is solo. I, I agree with you, I'm very familiar with the area. And I agree with you, the current situation is that front yard parking is very common. And also, given that daycare may be having to, some kind of front yard parking is essential for just even emergency or a few minutes stop to drop off kids or something. But if we do approve as it is, then it will undermine the heritage, then they don't have anything, unless they appeal, if they do, really do not like the front yard parking. I, I leave it to other members on the panel to discuss this issue.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the applicant, if you will, applicant. We're looking right now at the site plan. It's my understanding that there already is hard surface on the front of the whole property, basically 100% of the front yard is hard surface. And obviously, that's used for parking. So your proposal, does your proposal involve any soft surface at the front? Tell us what your proposal involves doing with the front yard of the house to achieve your, your two spaces.
Well, at this point in time, we don't have any proposal for the front yard for any soft landscaping. We could certainly look at that. One of the things is, we're, we're figuring that most people will be walking their children here. It's also near the subway. Staff will be coming by, by subway. There is other parking, so we could add soft landscaping. But there is, is none now, and, and as an architect, I can honestly tell you, you look at how the children arrive in the strollers with their parents or on, and so forth. And we would, we would respond to that, if, if it made sense to have seating areas or, you know, planters, planters to protect the children from running onto the streets. So it's, that part, to be perfectly honest, is, is a bit of a work in progress at this point. Our, our desire is to get this approved, so we can open the daycare to, to the families.
Just a moment, please, I'm gonna ask staff, please. Could you zoom in on the front, the front, front yard treatment there? Thank you very much, okay. So basically, though, basically, if you were to be approved, nothing's going to change on the front. It's 100% hardscape now, it's going to remain that way. That's, that's your current plan?
Well, we're in for building permit. We just got this letter from, I spoke to Heritage and responded to them, and we just got their, their notes, the report to you today. We are willing to, of course, talk to Heritage, we have to anyways for the building permit, right? And we honestly thought, because we weren't touching the outside of the building, we would be okay, because this is an existing condition, that it's all the, the brick pavers. So for our building permit anyways, we have to talk to Heritage, so we're, we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, panel members, anyone else, questions for the applicant? And I wanted to check with the moderator. Moderator, I had seen it out here, there is someone standing by to speak.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. The speakers are on standby.
These are the owners of the property, if you want to talk to them.
Yes, no, because we've spent such a long time with you, I'm, we do, we do have to hear the person who's registered to speak in opposition, let's do that now.
Yes, my name is Jacobus Van Clavern. I represent the Annex Residence Association, the Committee of Adjustment. Panel members, we object to this proposal mainly because of the two parking spaces in the front, and the fact that the existing backyard is simply leaving the asphalt and covering it over with a rubber safety surfacing. In, in other words, the, the grain change will not be through the ground, it will almost be through this catch basin in the center of it. And I think if the daycare wants to improve the neighborhood, which I assume they do, they should assume that the, all the asphalt is gone from the backyard, and that the rubber surface is only on top of some other permeable gravel or, or something like that. And, and the, the front yard should also be landscaped and the brick pavers removed from that and the area in front of. The, the, the area that's owned by the city, the Boulevard, should also be paved, not paved, but asphalted over with, not asphalted over, sorry, with, with the grass and, and landscaped in a, in a nice way to make this building, make this building more attractive to the neighbors, and, and the street as well. Now, there's nothing wrong with a daycare. In fact, we admire the people who are putting the daycare in, in our district in a big house like this, because that makes use of the house in a more useful way. But the, the, well, that's basically the, the, they're not moving the building or the, but it's basically the, the two cars in the front. And I did send a letter to the Committee of Adjustment, which somehow got lost. And I think Ms. Sabatino told me to send it on or something, and I didn't. So it should be, it should be somewhere in the, in the computer system somewhere. Anyway, that's all I've got to say about this. We, we would like the preschool toddler building, school in the area. But we also don't like the parking in the front, and we think that they can eliminate the parking and say that it's on a subway line, why, why, why can't we use the subway for all access to the school? The, the other, anytime there's a place where they can't provide parking, they say, oh, we're on a subway line, we can use the subway. So why don't we do that, and forget about the parking, and forget about the hard landscaping, and make it a nice residential house, even though it's in a multi, multi-use area, zoning area? So that's all I would say.
Thank you very much. Let's just see if anyone on the panel has a question for you. Panel members? Okay. No, but you, you raised a good point. No, but you, you raise good points. Point about the stormwater management in the backyard is, is interesting. Let's go back, in any case, to the applicant, applicant. Those are the concerns expressed. You have an opportunity now for your response and rebuttal.
Hello. Well, regarding the playgrounds in the backyard, our, our firm's probably done, we, we work with the, um, the provincial licensing all the time, and there are requirements for that. You need a hard surface, and then you put a rubberized surface down for the children because of the fall. If you don't like the catch basins, we, we can look at changing it. But basically, we design it, it's, it's all sloped to drain. And so there, the licensing is really concerned about the, the children and safety. So we have to work with licensing on that. We hear your comments, yes. Thank you for those. Regarding the front, if you don't want the parking, we're okay to let go of the parking in the front, absolutely, and, and look at some landscaping. We, we would ask for a deferral if the committee decides that we should do that. But we want to make sure we get this approved without the parking, because what we'll have to do is, we'll have to switch our variance. Instead of asking for a variance now for the two parking spaces in the front, we'll have to ask the committee to send out notices to have no parking. And under the current, under the zoning, we need two parking spaces. So we, we can ask for deferral. We just really want to bring this, this daycare to fruition in the neighborhood. And, and it's, it's a wonderful amenity. So thank you.
Okay, I just have a follow-up to what the applicant's question was. And I thought his suggestion made sense. Fine to have the rubber surface in the backyard, but why not have it over top of gravel or some other permeable covering that would allow the stormwater management to be done by the site as opposed to draining it into the, into the sewer system?
It, it doesn't quite work that way, and we're happy to explain that. Technically, you can't put it over that. But it, these are technical issues that we're happy to get into work. And I just can't do that, that right now. If we could do it on a permeable surface, we would. But they don't like grass or, or anything for outdoor play areas for children. It has to do with licensing requirements. So we need the building permit very soon on this. So that's why there's some urgency to this. We can get a building permit. We actually are in for building.
Excuse me. No, we don't need to go over that again. You've already explained why you, yeah, okay. So, in that case, panel, if there are no more questions, let us take Mr. Byatt.
Yeah, I'm a little puzzled, and perhaps I can get some explanation, clarification. I, I appreciate the gentleman who represents the Rate Payers Association in his comments. But in front of us, we have one variance request, and that's for the two parking. From the applicant's perspective, did I understand you correctly to say, if you don't have parking in the front, you cannot operate the daycare? Is that, is that correct?
No, we can operate the daycare. It would be nice to have the parking out front for emergency vehicles, certainly. That would be very good, and I think you, you've already spoken to that point. So we, if we had the parking out front for emergency vehicles, just in case, that would be great.
Just excuse me. Emergency vehicles park wherever they need to when there's an emergency. Do you need two legitimate parking spaces to operate a daycare?
No.
Thank you.
In which case, Mr. Chair, may I, sorry. Having two parking spaces approved for the front entrance to your daycare, to me suggests an additional component of danger. And, and I see this from, from a parental perspective. People coming in and out with their children in strollers and kids, kids tend to run, especially when they find their feet pair on. And you've got two parking spaces, which, once approved, will allow for cars to be parked. To me, that seems to be a little oxymoronic for a daycare center to have parking spaces right in front of it. If you could just give me some clarification, that would be great.
We don't need the parking out front. I agree with you. I would prefer to see no cars out front. It's just it was required under zoning. So we, we are willing to defer and change this to remove the parking spaces and come back to the committee and ask you to approve this with no parking, removing the two parking spaces. The notices would have to go out to the residents.
Excuse me. I gotta, I gotta stop you on this, because I'm confused. Excuse me, applicant? If, there's only one, your application only involves one minor variance, which is parking. So why would you need to come back to committee? I, I don't follow you on that.
Can I intercept?
No, no, I'd love to hear from the applicant, please. Just a moment, Ms. Chan. Could you, why, why do you talk about?
I, I understand in speaking with Ryan San, San Diego, who's the community planner, we had some conversations, and he talked to committee as well. He, he was very supportive of community planning of this, this daycare and licensing. He was concerned about the access to the north, which we've solved.
Excuse me, applicant? No, I, I have to stop you because of time.
Okay, sorry.
But you've only got one, one, one variance here that relates to parking.
Yes.
So you won't, what, okay. Ms. Chan, go ahead with your question, please.
Well, I just tried to, I, I think that it's been a little bit, and what she's trying to explain that if, if we do not approve the front yard parking, the application will turn into, we'll have to permit zero parking. So the variance will change. And that's why he, maybe it's a deferral. Unless we approve it now with no parking, zero parking.
If you can approve this now with no parking, that would be fine. Otherwise.
If we refused it, I think you mean. The, the committee has the choices right now to refuse the application, say no parking, to defer it, and then return to it, or to approve it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Chair, for point of clarification. The variance that, that is before us today is a surface parking space may not be located in the front yard. Two parking spaces will be located in the front yard. That is what is before the committee today. If this variance is to change, then the application has to be deferred for re-notification.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury. Panel members, are there any further questions of the applicant? Let's then, okay, we're gonna take the application into committee for a motion, please, unless there are comments beforehand if anyone likes. Go ahead, Mr. Byatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be inclined to move for a deferral of this application at this point in time.
Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded by Mr. Solomon.
I would just, if we can just, just for, for information for the applicant, just to, I guess the, the purpose for the deferral is to give them an opportunity to come back with a revised proposal, which we understand might be for no parking spaces, because a daycare would require two parking spaces. And as part of that, if they could note that, we would be interested in seeing some type of a landscape plan for the front yard area as well.
Thank you. Okay, it is moved and seconded to defer for the reasons cited by Mr. Solomon. That would be the amended, amended motion. Those in favor of that motion? And that motion is carried unanimously. The application is so deferred. The panel moves along to application number ten. Nine forty-three to nine forty-five Dundas Street West. On this application, panel has before it applicant's materials. There's a revised site plan, February. There's a previous committee of adjustment decision, two thousand and nineteen. There's email correspondence from community planning and staff reports from Transportation Services and Urban Forestry. Correspondence is both in support and opposition. In support from thirteen Beatrice Street. In opposition from nine fifty-one Dundas West and nine forty-nine Dundas West. There's also correspondence, or, uh, yeah, okay. So we'll ask the applicant to join us, please, by stating your name.
Hello, Edward Lee, architect here on behalf of the owner of nine forty-three, nine forty-five Dundas West.
I'm sorry, would you, did you state your name?
Sorry, Edward Lee.
Edward Lee, good morning, Edward, okay.
Good morning.
And just to confirm with moderator, there is someone standing by in opposition? Okay. Edward, you'll have five minutes to present the detail of your presentation of your application to the panel. Please go ahead.
Yes, good morning, thank you. Just like to start with a quick history about this project, since it was before the committee a couple of years ago. A previous committee decision was for the original proposal to merge two single-family semi-detached buildings into one building, which is now split horizontally as two units. So we took two semis and we made them into two top and bottom apartments and for a small front office space, fronting on Dundas, to be used for the owner's office studio. The proposed laneway suite for this larger lot, combined lot, is before you because of many minor variances, which are technicalities as a result of the merging of the two properties. As separate semi-detached lots, both properties would have been permitted to have as-of-right laneway suites built, two-story laneway suites on each. But because the two lots are merged, we exceed the overall width for one laneway house. So there's, that's minor variance number eight. Most of the minor variances, minor variance four, six, seven, ten, eleven, and twelve are all pertaining to the setback requirements from the lane. The corner condition at the southeast lot, lot corner, is what prompted the discussions with Planning and Transportation Services. Ultimately, after much discussion and clarifications, the fact that we are complying with the one point five meter rear laneway setback, Transportation Services was okay with the current site plan. The only request from both Planning and Transportation was that we allow for two bicycle parking spaces in the laneway suite, which have been added to the most recent site plan that you have before you. All the other minor variances are, are, are minor. The height variance is to permit a zero point three meter skylight curb projection above the maximum six meter roof level, which will not be visible from the street. And the side entrance that's bubbled in before, in the site plan now is to permit an additional access from the side. So the actual opening is not the minor variance, but the steps to get up to floor level are what triggered that minor variance. I believe the collection of minor variances we are seeking are all minor relative to the built form that would otherwise be permitted as of right as two separate lots. In addition to the conditions from transportation and planning, we also accept the forestry condition to declare any trees that will be removed on site. Also worth noting, the pool and the shed in the site plan are no longer part of our project moving forward due to cost and timeline reasons. Neither of those items triggered any of the minor variances.
Thank you very much. Question, Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask, are there any changes then to the variances that are before us?
No, the variances that will no longer be needed are minor variance nine and thirteen. Sorry, minor variance nine for the bicycle parking.
Let's go slowly here, because we do need.
Oh, yes, yes.
Those are changes that are significant. So just for the record, you are eliminating minor variance number nine?
No, sorry. Minor variance number thirteen, the last one.
I think it has a different number, numbering.
Oh, there are two, two, no, sorry. Oh, I might have mistaken. The one about the bicycle parking, sorry, number eight.
Number six, yeah. And number eight.
Yes. So that one, we will, we have agreed to accept Planning and Transportation staff report condition that we provide the two bicycle parking spaces.
Okay, then we shall consider the application with number eight eliminated. Thank you. Okay, we do have, we do have a speaker standing by to speak in opposition.
That's also number.
Go ahead, Ms. Chan. Go ahead.
Yes, and also number, variance number six. I thought he said that they comply.
Oh, no, not that we comply, but that Transportation and Planning do not have any concern about that minor variance anymore. It was detailed in Transportation's letter that at first they had requested this minor variance to be eliminated. But after clarification and discussion with Transportation staff, they understood our rationale for not being able to comply with this minor variance. So they are accepting this minor variance now.
Okay, thank you.
So my, number six stands.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just a brief question. Variance number two, you're, you're asking for six point three meters. It says that four is permitted, but I would have thought that six is permitted given the separation from the main house. Can you comment on that?
Yes, so the reason that four is the permitted height is because this is technically a mixed-use lot, now that the front office space is permitted. So it was reviewed as a laneway house proposal, but minor variances are related to a garage structure at four meters.
Okay, understood, thanks.
Panel members, good questions to clarify what we're dealing with. Thank you. I think now we can go to the person who's standing by to speak in opposition on this, and we'll ask that person to join us, please, by stating your name.
Hi, Shane, I've unmuted you. Hi, Shane Jacobs, you've been unmuted. You may need to unmute on your end or speak closer to the mic. Through you, Mr. Chair, I can give the speaker another call.
Do, do, do you want to call the, the person again? We'll stand by for a minute, that's okay. Let's see if we can, can raise the speaker.
First noble. Way to reach me is via email at shanejacobs@hotmail.
So through you, attempts were made to contact the speaker, and we couldn't reach them. So through you, Mr. Chair, attempts were made to contact the speaker, and we can't reach them.
Okay, then. So panel, we're not going to be able to hear from the speaker. We can't make contact with that speaker who had registered. So, in that case, this is your opportunity once again, panel members, if you have any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, then we can take the application into committee for a motion, please. Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this particular lot has a great deal of potential. It's quite deep. It's quite run down, especially in the rear where the laneway suite will be, is expected to be built. I think it's, what I can see from the plans, it's quite an improvement for the neighborhood and for the particular lot as well. I do believe it may be a very positive change in the neighborhood. My recommendation, or I would be inclined to approving the application as is with the amended, amended item.
And there's also. There's also a forestry condition, yeah.
With forestry condition number two, I believe, and as amended with the removal of variance number eight.
Very good.
If I can add to that, I think there are two other conditions, transportation services and community planning. I think community planning's condition is to tie it to the site plan, which shows the location of the bike spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon, I agree.
So to add transportation and, and community planning? Adding both of those, okay, very good, Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yes, and I, I also thought that if it's a laneway suite, there's always a standard laneway suite requirements in terms of fire, as, hydrants, locations, that sort of stuff, right?
Mr. Byatt, are you okay to add that language?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, then, is there a second for that motion as amended? And it is seconded, Ms., Ms. Chan? Seconded by Ms. Chan. So, moved and seconded to approve the motion as amended. Those in favor, show of hands, please. And motion is carried, the application is approved as amended. Panel moves along to item number 11, 75 Regal Road. And on this application, we have before us applicant submitted materials. There's an arborist report from November, and there is correspondence in concern from 72 Regal. So we'll ask the agent, please, to join us by stating your name.
Hello again, my lucky day, back-to-back hearings, Edward Lee, representing the owners of 75 Regal Road.
Good morning again, Edward, very good. Okay, Edward, I'm going to check with my panel colleagues to see if they'd like a presentation or have any questions for you on, on this application. Any? No, I think we know what you're looking for, so no request for presentation or questions. In that case, panel, we can take this application into committee for a motion, please. Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to move for approval, and I would also like to mention that the letter of concern has mentioned mainly the concerns are to improve or impose the Toronto green standards on this property. And I do not think that we can as community adjustment, so I move for approval with no conditions, yeah.
That is seconded by Mr. Reed. Moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands. And that's a unanimous vote to carry the motion and approve the application. Thank you. Number 12 is 183 Ferris Road. On 183 Ferris, we have before us applicant materials, there is an arborist report, presentation material from the agent. We have correspondence from TRCA and urban forestry. And there is a correspondence in opposition from 61 Cedar Crest Boulevard, Barbara Diamond. Okay, and we can now ask the agent, please, to join us to state your name.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair and the committee members. My name is Murat Ozgur, and I am the agent for 183 Ferris Road.
Good morning. Okay, agent, I'm going to ask the panel if they have any questions to put to you or whether they have any request for a presentation. I'm not hearing any questions or requests for presentations. So we can take this application then into panel for a motion. Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Thanks Chair, I think this is a reasonable application. Looking down the list of variances, they're all, they're all quite small, I think, both in, in number and in impact. And I do appreciate the fact that the, the garage is being located on the side, the side entrance of the house and not the front. I think that makes sense for both safety and, and the streetscape. And then just, yeah, the appearance and the function, I think both, both benefit from that. I think it's a reasonable request and that the variances are minor. So I would move approval of the application subject to urban forestry condition number one.
Thank you very much. Mr. Byatt, seconds. Moved and seconded to approve, subject to forestry, those in favor. That vote is unanimous, it carries the motion, and the application is so approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Panel moves along to item number 13, 1147 Davenport Road. On this application, we have before us the materials submitted by the application, and that is the full extent of materials on 1147 Davenport. So we shall ask the agent now to join us, please, just state your name.
Good morning, Sir Chair and fellow committee members. My name is David Eagleman on behalf of the owner, and I'm a planner of Design Plan Services.
Thank you very much, good morning. Panel members. Questions? Presentation? No? Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Just a quick question, it, it seems like, it seems like this project is also, is already under construction, and I'm just wondering what has happened between building permit and construction and, and coming to committee for the variances?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chair, to answer your question, Mr. Reed, basically, a building permit application was pulled in 2017 for this building. These variances are a direct result of just interior changes to the building and addition of residential units within the existing second floor. So this application is not changing anything from what is already existing as a result of that pulled permit. It is all just a result of interior changes to add residential uses and also just to change some of the interior layout.
That's helpful, thanks.
Further questions? Hearing none, we can now take this application into committee for a motion by panel. Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Okay, I thought maybe you want to do it. Do you want to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll do it. I mean, this is a very built-up area and it's just a very common, this type of mixed-use buildings. And I, I like the idea of adding more residential units, and I'm totally in support of this application. And if there aren't any comments, I'd like to move for approval. I don't think there's any.
Thank you. That, Mr. Solomon, seconding? So, moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Motion carried, and the application is so approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. Have a good day.
Panel moves along to number 14, 93 Kenneth Ave. On this application before the panel are the applicant's materials, two photographs of existing trees, January 20th, cover letter from the agent, Feb. 23, arborist report, Feb. 23, copy of correspondence sent to the neighbors from the agent, February, presentation materials from the agent, February, and a tree inventory and preservation plan report by Kuntz Forestry, February. We have a staff report from urban forestry, and there is correspondence supporting the application from 81 Kenneth, plus 14 forum letters in support, owners and occupants at 77, 78, 80, 81, 84, 86, 87, and 91 Kenneth. And on Indian Road Crescent, 169, 170, 175, and 178, received in February. In opposition, there is correspondence from 171 Indian Road Crescent, Rita Lee and W. McCleary Moore. Good, so. And I'll just check with the moderator now. Moderator, do we have someone, we were showing someone registered in opposition? Okay, very good, let's have the agent join us, please.
My name is Paul Gory, and I'm a senior associate with Mossland Architects, and I'm the agent for the owners of 93 Kenneth.
Very good. Okay, then, Mr. Gory, you have five minutes to present your application to the panel, please proceed.
Thank you. Would it be possible to show the presentation materials document that was submitted to the committee? Thank you. The owners of 93 Kenneth Avenue have applied to the committee for variances in relation to a proposal to demolish their existing garage and construct a new carport with green roof. The existing garage is past its prime, is too narrow to suit its intended purpose, and does not meet the city of Toronto dimensions for a required parking space. As a result, the owners cannot use it to park their vehicle and must instead use neighborhood-on-street parking. The owners would like to construct a new carport suitable for parking their vehicle in the same location as the existing garage. The proposal includes a new carport with a green roof, overhead door to the lane, and a bicycle storage area. It is very important to the owners that the proposed carport design be an improvement on the existing condition. Pages six through nine of the presentation materials document shows the existing condition and proposed structure. The owners believe that a carport with an enclosed bicycle storage area is more open and less visually imposing than a fully enclosed garage. Roof height of the proposed carport is 25% less than the maximum height allowed and 0.3 meters lower than the ridge of the existing roof. The area of the proposed soft landscaping is four times the existing soft landscape area, and when combined with the green roof area, the soft landscaping will be close to 75% of the rear yard. The owners have been in correspondence with their neighbors regarding the proposed project and minor variances. A letter was circulated to many neighbors within 60 meters to advise them of the proposal and to invite feedback. The owners received 14 letters of support, with an additional four neighbors who indicated that they would like the proposal or had no concerns. With respect to the four minor variances we are requesting, we believe that they are minor, desirable, and appropriate development of the land and in keeping with the general intent of the zoning bylaws and the official plan. Requested variance one pertains to the rear yard soft landscaping requirement. 50% of the rear yard is required to be soft landscaping. I would like to note that the shape and configuration of this property is unique compared to most downtown residential properties. It has a very shallow 5.3-meter backyard and larger-than-average side yard due to the neighboring laneway. The existing rear yard soft landscaping is 6% of the total rear yard area. Each three of the presentation materials shows the existing soft landscaping. The proposed project will have 26% rear yard soft landscaping along with an additional 46.5% in green roof area, for a total of 72.5% soft landscaping, which is a substantial improvement from the existing condition. Presentation pages four and five show the proposed soft landscape and proposed soft landscaping with green roof. The side yard soft landscaping is 62% of the total side yard area, which will remain unchanged and is almost as large as the required rear yard soft landscaping. Variances two and three pertain to the rear yard zero-meter setback and the west side yard zero-meter setback. The existing garage has a zero-meter setback from the south property line, and we are proposing to place the proposed carport in the same location. The proposed carport has been defined by the zoning examiner as an ancillary storage shed with a roof and therefore requires a 0.3-meter setback. If this project were built to the same dimensions as a garage with four walls enclosing the required parking space, these two variances would not be required, as zero-meter rear and side yard setbacks are permitted for detached garages per the zoning bylaw 10106020. I would like to note that the bylaw refers to detached garages as ancillary building or structure containing a parking space, and we believe that the proposal meets the intention of this definition. Variance four pertains to the lot coverage requirement. Allowable lot coverage for ancillary buildings or structures is 5% of the property area. The existing garage has a lot coverage of 11% of the property area. The proposed enclosed portion of the carport will have an area of only 5.5% of the property area, with the covered portion of the open carport equaling 12.5% of the property area. In addition, ancillary buildings or structures containing required parking spaces are exempt from lot coverage requirements per bylaw 10106070B, and we believe that the proposal meets the intention of this definition. If this project were built to the same dimensions but as a garage with four walls enclosing the required parking space, or if the west wall of the enclosed portion of the carport were removed, a variance would not be required. Lastly, presentation materials document, pages 10 through 15, shows renderings of the massing of the existing garage, proposed garage, and what could be built as of right, showing that we believe that this is a modest and considerate proposal. I respectfully submit that the proposal is an improvement to the existing condition and that the requested variances meet the four tests and that they are minor, desirable, and appropriate development of the land and in keeping with the general intent of the zoning bylaws and official plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much, much appreciated. Let's go to the person standing by in opposition and hear from them, then we'll come, come back to the panel. And we'll ask the, the speaker registered to join us, please, by stating your name.
My name is Rita Lee. I'm here with my husband Claire Moore. We're the owners of 171 Indian Road Crescent. The applicant's entire rear property line runs, runs along our side yard. And so we're the owners most impacted by this proposal to demolish their existing garage and build a storage shed with a roof, according to the zoning examiner, and a carport with a storage shed and a green roof, according to their architect.
Go ahead and tell us about the impact on you.
Okay, the impact on us is that it's going from a 20-foot garage to a 30-foot structure. And if you look at our photos, if you could put up photo one, four, five, 5A, here's photo one, which gives you an idea of what our backyard looks like at this point. So to the left is the, is the applicant's garage presently, which we have painted over the years and maintained, cleaned out the eaves troughs, whatever. And on the right is the carport that our neighbor has put up, complying with the 0.3-meter setback. So that's what our yard looks like from our patio. If we go to photo number four, this is the, our neighbor's carport, which has been set back 0.3 meters. So it's an imposing structure in black, and we think that the foot setback helps mitigate its massiveness. And if we go to photo number five.
I'm going to stop you, Ms. Lee, there right with that photograph in mind, just for clarification, this is important. So that's an existing structure, is that the one that was on the right? This is your neighbor? Okay, so they've built a carport two on that side, and that's what it looked like during construction?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that was set back the 0.3 meters, or 0.3 meters.
Go ahead, thank you.
Sorry, I'm still into like foot, feet and inches. Okay, and if we go to photo number five. Oh, it's in the...
One B.
In the one B package.
No.
It's, um... Sorry, we did send it in late, the additional photos. So that's, um, that's five. Okay. We can work with this. So this is the view from our kitchen window. As you can see, the existing garage, and we just basically outlined where the new carport would be, and it would definitely extend past that first panel. And if we go to five B, that's the impact it would have on us in terms of using our patio, looking out the kitchen window on a constant basis. And we think that the zero-point-three-meter setback would definitely help mitigate the massiveness of this, this wall blackness, whatever you want to call it. So I understand that, you know, it would, it's better than the existing garage, but that's the impact on us, and we're asking for, for the setback requirement to be upheld. The other thing that we're concerned about is the drainage that the roof, the roof garden could cause, and considering they don't have enough ground landscaping and need to absorb that and the lot coverage...
I'll ask for your final comment now, please.
Yeah. Okay. If... Sorry.
The road.
Why don't you say it?
Hi, it's Claire Moore.
You'll have to make your final comment quite quickly, please.
Okay. Throughout their presentation and with us and to you, this whole thing is predicated on if it was a garage. It weaves through every single one of their arguments. This is not a garage. This is a carport subject to a separate bylaw that requires a setback, and we would like that setback enforced because of this massive thirty, if you take the side part, forty-foot by ten-foot wall abutting our property.
Okay. I've given you extra time. Your time is now up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Panel members, any questions for these speakers? Okay. Let's go back then to the agent, who'll have an opportunity to respond to this and to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll go back to the agent now, please, for rebuttal.
Thank you. Could we pull up the presentation materials, page ten through fifteen, please? So these documents show the existing structure and garage, the proposed structure, and then also an overlay of what would be allowed as of right, giving an indication of how the owners are trying to be considerate in the design process by not maximizing the as-of-right-built structure. And in addition, the owners feel like they're actually creating a more open structure, as there would likely be a six-foot fence along the south property line anyway. If we were to move the south wall, the point-three meters, to the north, we would not be able to get the required parking space in the garage and also maintain our one-point-eight-meter setback to the rear wall of the house because of the very narrow and very small backyard. It's only five-point-three meters. And then also with respect to the comment about the carport versus the garage, when the setback and coverage bylaws refer to garages, they refer to them as ancillary buildings or structures that contain a parking space, which is the intent of this project. We're not trying to build a shed. We're trying to build a parking space cover. And so that is our response to their objection number one. With respect to the drainage requirements, we're increasing the amount of soft landscaping on the property and also adding a green roof, and the green roof will act to slow and reduce the drainage at grade. And at grade, we're providing more soft landscaping for the roof to drain onto.
So the roof will drain into the, what is, absorbed by the green roof will be absorbed by the rear yard. It won't be going into the, into the public sewer system?
Correct.
Thank you. Any further comments, applicant, or can we...
No further comments.
Okay. Panel members, any questions for the applicant now? Ms. Chan, go ahead, and then followed by Mr. Byatt.
Yes, just a very small question. Can you tell us the height of the existing fence dividing your property and the neighbor just spoken?
I believe that it's a six-foot fence.
Six-foot fence? Okay. Thank you. So it means that your carport, the roof, those that go about three feet, right?
Correct.
Mr. Byatt, your question?
Just a quick one for the, first a comment and a question. I am quite impressed by the design of the carport, the fact that you also, you have a green roof and also an opening along the neighboring fence, which makes it somewhat more, somewhat less intrusive than a solid wall. I do have a question with regard. I was looking at your plan, and I noticed just on the one side of the, where you've got soft landscaping, you've got an area that says concrete paving?
Yes.
Is there a reason for the concrete paving?
It's an existing condition that is used by the owners.
Oh, I see. Okay. Is that, is it possible that that paving area could be replaced with porous concrete so that it adds to the porosity of the backyard?
Like semi-permeable concrete or paving?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that there is potential for that.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. We can now take this application into committee for a motion, and we'll do that now. Are there any comments first from panel members on the application? Okay. Is anyone ready to proceed with the motion? Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having listened to the neighbors and their concerns, I appreciate their concerns. However, it looks, for me, from my perspective and looking at the designs that are presented before us, I seem to think that the new structure will be a lot better. It would be an improvement over what the existing structure certainly it would be. In addition, it's not a blank wall as the neighbor on the other side, who's also built a carport, that presents for the neighbors who are concerned and were in opposition. So I am in approval, and the fact that the carport will have a green roof, I think that's commendable as well. I'm always concerned about the having sufficient soft landscaping and permeable paving. So I am quite happy to move a motion to approve the, the, the application with the condition that the existing concrete paving that we see in the plan be replaced with permeable paving.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded, Ms. Chan? You're seconding?
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Chan. So moved and seconded to approve, subject to replacing the concrete with permeable pavers in the rear yard? Just a moment.
Sorry. Pre-press.
Just...
Sorry. I think there's also Urban Forestry Condition Number Two. We could add that.
Thank you.
So we're going to, yes. So amending the, the motion to include the forestry provision and also the condition that replacement of the concrete in the backyard with permeable pavers. That's moved and seconded. Those in favor? Show of hands, please. That's unanimous vote to carry that motion as amended and to approve the application. Thank you very much. Okay. At this stage, we're on, we've just finished number fourteen out of the twenty for this morning, so I'm going to recess the panel now for ten minutes, ten minutes, and we'll resume at eleven forty-one. So ten-minute recess. Thank you. item number fifteen. Forty Gibson Avenue. On Forty Gibson. Before us, we have the applicant submitted materials. Cover letter from the agent, February first. There is an order to comply. Um, affecting the subject property issued by the city on August the third, twenty twenty-one. Email correspondence from Transportation Services Feb. twenty-five. And a staff report from Transportation Services, February the sixteenth. In opposition, there's correspondence from Alan Jenkins. On behalf of the owner of thirty-eight Gibson, that would be next door. Received February twenty-third. Okay, so.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, staff did receive a letter from the agent yesterday from Ashley Robertson. Just confirming that the new owners of this site will proceed with this application and maintain its design registered at this hearing.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna check with the moderator. Moderator, um, do we have the the person standing by, Mr. Jenkins, in opposition?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Chair. Um, the speaker was on the line, but they may have dropped off the call, so I'll give them a call back. They, they were on the line, but they dropped off the call, so I'll give them a call back.
The, the vet speaker?
The, the registered speaker, yeah. I have the agent, though.
Okay. Let's see if you can get that speaker back. And we'll go now to the agent, please. And ask the agent to join us by stating your name.
Hi, Ashley. Um, I've unmuted your call-in device. I don't see your other device. Um, I do have Nicholas. Uh, which I can unmute right now.
Hi, um, so, yes, so I registered, this is Ashley Robertson. I registered as the agent. I was provided this link and followed up with Sabrina that this would be the one that I use.
Okay, Ashley, yes, you are shown as a registered speaker, so you are the agent representing the owner, the new owners, correct?
That is correct, yes.
We understand there are new owners of the property. Okay, then, you have, uh, you have five minutes to present the detail of your application to the committee. We'd ask you to, uh, to comment on the order to comply and the fact that, uh, this request is involved in legalizing what's already been built, but go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members, for hearing this application of the variances for the garage to rectify the order to comply and legalize the garage on-site, along with permitting a third-floor balcony on the existing flat roof. To provide some background context, the contractor who was performing the work of the permitted house renovation was scoped with reinforcing and re-cladding the existing parking structure. During construction, the contractor made a decision on his own accord, and it was taken down, and a new garage that was in line with the neighbors was constructed. Through this construction, an order to comply was issued. And we are now here, representing the new owners of the home, to rectify the order and legalize the garage. We are asking for the following variances to do so. Before I begin, I would like to advise that we would like to eliminate two of the variances for the garage. Variance number six and variance number seven for the side yard setbacks.
Let's just go, okay, Ashley, hang on a second, let's go slowly here. Just so we capture that, that is extremely important.
Sure. So this is for number six and number seven.
Number six and seven are eliminated from the application at your request. Okay, thank you.
Correct, yes. This was, this was done in error, since a compliant garage in this zone can be built to zero lot line on the internal side yards. We are asking for a setback from the laneway of zero point two-seven meters where one meter is required, along with a setback from the center line of the lane of one point seven-eight meters where two point five meters is required. I would like to point out that the transportation planner, who previously asked for the center line of laneway variance to be refused, is now of the opinion, um, that it is okay to do so, as you will see in the email dated February twenty-fifth. After his internal discussion and discussion with myself, um, pointing out the condition of the property, along with the characteristics of this laneway block, where not only is the garage in line with the adjacent neighbors, as you will see in the site plan, but throughout the laneway block, it is characteristic that the majority of the southern properties where number forty is located have garages, carports, and backyard fences on zero lot line, while the northern properties across from here are well set back from the rear yard property. We also are asking for a parking length of five point two-eight, where five point six is required. This variance was also reviewed by the transportation planner, who is of the opinion that an accept, that this is acceptable, given the constraints of the site and other similar reduced parking space length approvals in the area. And again, this is in line with the existing, with the adjacent neighbors. We are also asking for a stair to be in line with the garage setback. This will allow access for maintenance and upkeep of the intensive green roof being proposed. We are asking for a soft yard landscaping variance that is related, that as it relates to the existing condition, that includes concrete steps to make up for the grade change from the front to back, and is working with a very restricted backyard size. As a response, we are proposing the intensive green roof, uh, as mentioned. This is, uh, this, with this application, we are also asking for a variance as it relates to the second-floor balcony. Um, I would like to point out that a balcony, um, a rooftop balcony is permitted, uh, in this zone, and we are looking to use the existing roof that is zero point four-eight meters higher than the third-floor level, um, and, uh, creating a balcony on top of this. As mentioned, this is an existing built-up roof over the second floor at the rear, and it already has an existing exterior door from the third floor, along with a square cutout for the door swing. But it is not currently a balcony with railings and safety measures in place. With this existing built-up roof and roof level, with the existing built-up roof, the roof level is higher than the finished first floor, and that is what is required for this variance, um, to allow for it to become a balcony. In conclusion, I feel that these variances that we are requesting follow the four tests and are minor and very characteristic of the neighborhood. We are looking to rectify the order and build in line with the adjacent neighbors. We do not have any comments from planning, and the transportation planner is not objecting to any of the requested variances any longer. Um, thank you for hearing this application and its related variances today.
Thank you very much. I do have a question for you, Ashley.
Sure.
I want to clarify. With respect to the transportation concern over the center line.
Yes.
Did you say that transportation has re-examined their position on that, and they are no longer concerned about it?
That is correct. If you, um, see me-
Just a moment, please. Ju- just, on that account, though, we have a, a February sixteen report from transportation in which that concern was stated.
Yes.
But unless I'm wrong, I haven't seen anything from transportation addressed to the committee in which they lift their concern about that. Um, does anyone else on the panel have any seen anything where, where transportation? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
Uh, there was a February twenty-five, uh, email that we received, I guess it was, uh, yesterday, um, which indicated that transportation has, no longer has objections.
Thank you very much, okay. That, that's what I needed to know, okay.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes? Oh, for the, your, your question is for the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, just a very small question. Uh, can you tell us what has been built? It's only the garage has been built, uh, the balcony is not built yet, right?
That is correct. It, it's an existing flat roof over the second floor, um, and there is an existing exterior door to that flat roof, but it's not a balcony, as of, as of now.
Okay. Okay, uh, if that's the case, uh, should we, uh, to, to the chairman, should we amend the purpose clause? Is to legalize the detached garage? Instead of, uh, to construct?
You, you wanna change that wording? So Ms. Chan, do, do you wish to, uh, suggest that we change the wording on one of the variances?
No, uh, the purpose clause. Is it by constructing a third, uh, story balcony and to legalize the one-story detached garage?
Okay, you're suggesting we change the wording there to legalize the one-story garage?
Through you, Mr. Chair, then, that means the purpose of application would read "to alter the existing two-and-one-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a third-story balcony and to legalize and maintain the one-story detached garage in the rear yard."
Correct.
Yes, okay. Well, okay, that's good, that's actually a good suggestion. I wanna check with the moderator now to see if, oh. Mr. Solomon? Okay.
Yeah, I, I had a question on, about the garage. Has the green roof on top of the garage been, um, constructed?
It is not as of yet. The, the plan was to, after this approval, um, and come spring, to, um, to create that green roof and, and, uh, smooth forward.
And the, the stairs, um, leading to the roof of the garage, has that been built?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you.
Checking moderator, do we have Mr. Jenkins standing by now?
Hello?
Hello, yes, state your name, please.
Yes, uh, yes, my name is Alan Jenkins.
Yes.
I'm, uh, agent for the owners of Thirty-Eight Gibson.
I beg your pardon, you are the agent for who?
Thirty-eight Gibson Avenue, the owners.
You have five minutes to address your concerns to the panel, go ahead, please.
Yes. Um, I'm concerned about the stairs that, uh, are, are leading up onto the roof, and, uh, I am aware that the new owners have a young child. Uh, a green roof is a very big description, and it's, uh, either one of two, um, prob- problems, and, uh, if it becomes a green roof, it would also require a railing around it to prevent the small child from falling off, off the roof. So I think that the access to that, uh, probably it should be a patio, uh, with a green roof as a description, and to, uh, that concern, uh, that should be a totally separate application for approval of a, a patio on that, uh, roof. And it appeared that that stair was built for that purpose. Uh, my next concern, um, was the, uh, the green la- the landscaping requirement. Uh, if you look at the survey, and this was not in my notes, but the area is, uh, has been paved over, so that reduced the green area of that backyard between the garage and the house. And, uh, what is left is the three-square meters, which is basically a flowerbed. So, um, all of this work was done without a permit, and, uh, had an application been made, that could have been addressed then. And, um, I'd just like the committee to suggest maybe that patio be changed to a permeable patio or something that would absorb water. Uh, the third consideration is, uh, the balcony on the third floor. Uh, I, I was, am the contractor that, uh, did all the alterations on, um, Thirty-Eight Gibson, and at that time, there was no, uh, door accessing the back roof of the, uh, second floor. And I think it was probably done during the construction, uh, renovation, um, over the past couple of years. And, uh, so, putting a balcony or patio up there, I would like you to consider, uh, making a consideration that, uh, a privacy fence be placed on the, uh, east side, uh, similar to the one that they intend to put on the west side. And remove the railing that, or not, remove the railing back, uh, four feet from the, uh, north edge or the back edge of the, uh, house to minimize that size so that it ensures the privacy of the, uh, owner of Thirty-Eight Gibson. And those are, are concerns.
Okay, then, any questions for this speaker panel? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
So if we can just, um, look at that, uh, site plan that's on the screen, and if you can just explain, uh, how far back does the house, the building at number thirty-eight go in terms of its relationship to the, the proposed balcony on number forty?
Um, I have to open up the site plan.
Okay.
It's showing on the screen here now.
Just from memory, uh, while I'm not on screen, I'm on phone, sorry. But I do, I do have it on my computer. Uh, from memory, uh, the back, uh, wall of forty is, uh, in line with the back of, uh, thirty-eight. Roughly. There wasn't a difference put on thirty-eight, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I'll see if I can open that up.
So i- it looks like on, on the screen that, that I see, uh, the site plan shows that the proposed balcony doesn't not go as far back as the wall of the, of thirty-eight, number thirty-eight. Is that, would that be correct?
Uh, probably equal.
I wanna see the bottom side, the bottom of the image, there we are, that's good, okay. Yeah, this tells the story a little better, okay, so we can see thirty-eight here. And it does project out quite a bit beyond the back of number forty. We can see this, um, Mr. Jenkins, perhaps you can't, but we have a pretty good site plan up here on the screen now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the proposal that I, well, one site plan that I see, that, that the two back walls of the house are in line. The patio is on the roof of, uh, it, the roof is set back.
With this existing built-up roof and roof level, with the existing built-up roof, the roof level is higher than the finished first floor, and that is what is required for this variance to allow for it to become a balcony. In conclusion, I feel that these variances that we are requesting follow the four tests and are minor and very characteristic of the neighborhood. We are looking to rectify the order and build in line with the adjacent neighbors. We do not have any comments from planning, and the transportation planner is not objecting to any of the requested variances any longer. Thank you for hearing this application and its related variances today.
Thank you very much. I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Actually, I want to clarify. With respect to the transportation concern over the center line.
Yes.
Did you say that transportation has reexamined their position on that and they are no longer concerned about it?
That is correct. If you see me-
Just a moment, please. On that account, though, we have a February 16 report from transportation in which that concern was stated.
Yes.
But unless I'm wrong, I haven't seen anything from transportation addressed to the committee in which they lift their concern about that. Does anyone else on the panel have any, seen anything where transportation? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
There was a February 25 email that we received, I guess it was yesterday, which indicated that transportation has, no longer has objections.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's what I needed to know. Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes? Oh, your question is for the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, just a very small question. Can you tell us what has been built? It's only the garage has been built. The balcony is not built yet, right?
That is correct. It's an existing flat roof over the second floor, and there is an existing exterior door to that flat roof, but it's not a balcony as of now.
Okay. Okay, if that's the case, should we, to the chairman, should we amend the purpose clause is to legalize the detached garage instead of to construct?
You want to change that wording? So, Ms. Chan, do you wish to suggest that we change the wording on one of the variances?
No, the purpose clause. Is it by constructing a third-story balcony and to legalize the one-story detached garage?
Okay, you're suggesting we change the wording to legalize the one-story garage?
Through you, Mr. Chair, then. That means the purpose of application would read to alter the existing two- and one-half story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a third-story balcony and to legalize and maintain the one-story detached garage in the rear yard.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Well, okay. That's good. That's actually a good suggestion. I want to check with the moderator now to see if, oh, Mr. Solomon? Okay.
Yeah, I had a question about the garage. Has the green roof on top of the garage been constructed?
It is not as of yet. The plan was to, after this approval, and come spring, to create that green roof and smooth forward.
And the stairs leading to the roof of the garage, has that been built?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you.
Checking moderator, do we have Mr. Jenkins standing by now?
Hello?
Hello, yes. State your name, please.
Yes, my name is Alan Jenkins.
Yes.
I'm agent for the owners of Thirty-Eight Gibson.
I beg your pardon, you are the agent for who?
Thirty-Eight Gibson Avenue, the owners.
Thirty-Eight Gibson, okay. You have five minutes to address your concerns to the panel. Go ahead, please.
Yes. I'm concerned about the stairs that are leading up onto the roof, and I am aware that the new owners have a young child. A green roof is a very big description, and it's either one of two problems. And if it becomes a green roof, it would also require railing around it to prevent the small child from falling off the roof. So I think that the access to that probably, it should be a patio with a green roof as a description, and to that concern, that should be a totally separate application for approval of a patio on that roof. And it appeared that that stair was built for that purpose. My next concern was the, the landscaping requirement. If you look at the survey, and this was not in my notes, but the area is, has been paved over, so that reduced the green area of that backyard between the garage and the house. And what is left is the three square meters, which is basically a flowerbed. So all of this work was done without a permit, and had an application been made, that could have been addressed then. And I'd just like the committee to suggest maybe that patio be changed to a permeable patio or something that would absorb water. The third consideration is the balcony on the third floor. I was, am the contractor that did all the alterations on Thirty-Eight Gibson, and at that time, there was no door accessing the back roof of the second floor. And I think it was probably done during the construction renovation over the past couple of years. And so putting a balcony or patio up there, I would like you to consider, making a consideration that a privacy fence be placed on the east side, similar to the one that they intend to put on the west side, and remove the railing that, or move the railing back four feet from the north edge or the back edge of the house to minimize that size so that it ensures the privacy of the owner of Thirty-Eight Gibson. And those are our concerns.
Okay, then. Any questions for this speaker panel? Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
So if we can just look at that site plan that's on the screen, and if you can just explain, how far back does the house, the building at number thirty-eight, go in terms of its relationship to the proposed balcony on number forty?
I have to open up the site plan.
Okay.
It's showing on the screen here now.
Just from memory, while I'm not on screen, I'm on phone, sorry. But I do have it on my computer. From memory, the back wall of forty is in line with the back of thirty-eight, roughly. There wasn't a difference put on thirty-eight, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I'll see if I can open that up.
So it looks like on the screen that I see, the site plan shows that the proposed balcony does not go as far back as the wall of the, of thirty-eight, number thirty-eight. Is that, would that be correct?
Probably equal.
Are you able to move that image? I want to see the bottom side, the bottom of the image. There we are. That's good. Okay, yeah, this tells the story a little better. Okay, so we can see thirty-eight here, and it does project out quite a bit beyond the back of number forty. We can see this. Mr. Jenkins, perhaps you can't, but we have a pretty good site plan up here on the screen now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the proposal that I, well, one site plan that I see, that the two back walls of the house are in line. The patio is on the roof of, the roof is set back of the second floor on forty.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions for this speaker, we'll go back to the applicant on this application for rebuttal on the issues, on the suggestions and questions that were brought forward by the speaker. So we return now to Ashley Robertson.
Hi, yes. Thank you, Chair and committee members. So I would like to just start off by clarifying a point that Alan made. The current owners do not have a child, just to clarify that point related to his safety concerns there. Related to the balcony consideration, as you, as you do see illustrated here, the proposed balcony does not extend beyond the existing house at Thirty-Eight Gibson Avenue. It is well behind that, about three feet minimum, and we feel that the visual imposition from, from the balcony to the garage, or to the backyard, would be, would be maintained there. And, and that addition at the rear does go up three stories. So you can imagine that in terms of the view from the balcony into that small backyard area would not be, would not be evident. And regarding the stair that, that is accessing the green roof, we just want to make it known, I guess, to, to the committee, is that the existing garage to the south on Thirty-Eight Gibson has a walkway that goes from the second floor to their rooftop garden. That was permitted back in 2019. So just in terms of us wanting to maintain and upkeep our rooftop garden, we require these stairs to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, panel, are there any further questions for the applicant? Hearing, oh, there are, yes, there are. Mr. Byatt first, Ms. Chan second. Mr. Byatt, you need to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the applicant, just a quick question with regard to the existing concrete paver between the home and the garage. Is that an area that you'd be willing to have permeable paving installed so that the, the soft landscaping aspect would be improved?
At this, at this time, given the, that hadn't been discussed with the owners, and this is an existing condition, I'm not able to, to decide on that today, saying that that would all be replaced. I apologize.
Thank you.
And Ms. Chan, you had a question, followed by Mr. Solomon?
Actually, that was exactly my question about the concrete paving. So, okay.
Well, you know, the fact of the matter is that committee will decide that. Mr. Solomon, go ahead.
So I'm trying to understand the purpose of having permanent stairs. There is no green roof on the garage. This was built, I guess, last summer, and still no green roof. What's the purpose of permanent stairs? Why can't you just put upstairs a ladder anytime you need to go up to that? I just don't understand the purpose.
Sure. I, with the proposal here, we're looking to do an intensive green roof, which is going to require additional, additional maintenance, different tools being brought up, watering, and it's just part of the design of this intensive green roof that we are looking to propose on this green roof.
So the intention is to make the roof green?
To be maintaining it. Sorry, Chair?
The intention is very firm and clear to make the garage roof a green roof?
Correct, yes. That's what we're proposing.
But how often, so how often does somebody need to go up to do maintenance work of the green roof?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have the answer to that. But at the same time, based on what the design, it's also upkeep. It's not just for maintenance. With the intensive green roof, the intention that there'll be different, different types of plants that have to be maintained and cut, and it's not just a green roof that requires watering.
So, so part of the reason for the stairs to get up there is because you want to go up there and kind of enjoy the green roof? If you're a gardener, you want to putter around up there. Is that the idea?
Yeah, that would be to be determined depending on what plants are up there. It won't be, just to correct, it won't be a place to enjoy. There's not going to be loungers or anything like that up there. It does have to just be maintained and up kept.
Ms. Chan, go ahead.
I just tried to point out that if it's proposed as a maintenance stair, or for the purpose of maintenance, it's actually not enough. There will be like safety guard on the roof. And I think that this, Solomon's question is valid, because just to how often you go up there, is this for maintenance, do you actually need a permanent stair? Or whether it's just like a ship ladder? And because in this case, it's actually encourage people to use, to occupy it as, for some other purpose. And in the past, we, we have put conditions on this kind of proposal.
Before we go into committee panel, are there any final questions for the applicant? Okay. So then, at this point, we shall take the application into committee. And applicant, stand by in case a question comes up that we need to put to you, in which case we would briefly come out of committee. So we'll go into committee now for a motion, and unless there, anyone has comments about the application, those are welcome now to make those comments now before we do that. Go ahead, Ms. Chan, then, Mr. Solomon.
Yeah, I have, I have two comments. One is about the, yeah, the stair, which is, if we allow that, we should put a condition saying that the rooftop cannot be used as a patio. Or, that, oh, sorry. Sorry, my phone. The second is that if we're going to approve this application, it should tie to the site plan, because in the case, there's a green roof, and because it's not built yet. Okay?
Yes, okay. Your first, just one moment, Mr. Solomon, Ms. Chan? Okay, Ms. Chan, your first point was that we should have a condition that what? I missed the condition.
Sorry, I didn't know how to turn off my landline. I just managed to do it. Okay, the first condition is that I think if we allow the permanent stair, we should put a condition to say that the rooftop, the green roof cannot be used as a patio.
Cannot be used as a patio, okay. Okay, go ahead.
And if, if we also approve the application, we should tie it to the site plan and also the roof plan of the structure. The third question is to everybody's comment is about the concrete paving.
Just a second. Mr. Solomon's been waiting patiently here, and he's got, he has a comment. Go ahead, Mr. Solomon.
No, I just, I do agree with those conditions. I think it's very important to tie down the purpose of that roof, and that is it can only be used as a green roof and cannot be used as an outdoor rooftop patio.
I get it. Okay, fine. Any further comments, or are we ready for a motion? Mr. Byatt?
Just to confirm with Ms. Chan, with regard to the concrete pavers or the concrete space that currently exists, that that be turned, the condition be that that be turned into permeable paving.
Mr. Solomon?
And also another condition dealing with the, the deck on the, the proposed new deck on the second floor, that there be opaque privacy screening on the east and west sides of minimum 1.5 meter height.
These are some good ideas. We need to capture them when we're making our motion. So who's ready to, who's ready to step forward with a motion on this application? Ms. Chan, proceed.
Okay, I tried to, again, okay, I move for proof of with the following conditions. First, it's to tie to the site plan. Second, is that the green roof above the garage cannot be used as a recreation patio space. Thirdly, we place the existing concrete paving in the back, in the rear yard with permeable pavings.
And there was another condition, do you want to include it, which was related to the opaque screening on the deck?
Oh, yes, yes, I forgot that part. With the opaque screening on, is it on the east side? Well, actually, they have already proposed the west side, so adding the east side with privacy screen, 1.5 meter minimum from the deck.
Just for clarity, are you proposing east and west, or west or east only?
They, they have proposed already on the plan, the west, so we're adding the east. So the condition is that both, yeah, both.
Both east and west.
Approved as amended, as amended.
As amended, okay. And we shall add as amended here, because we are, we know that variances number six and seven have been eliminated at the request of the applicant. So that's the shape of the motion now. Those two variances are eliminated. Those conditions are added, subject for the approval, and that's what we have. Is there a second to that motion? It is seconded by Mr. Solomon. I'm not going to repeat all that. I'm going to say that it is moved and seconded to approve the application as amended, subject to those conditions. All those in favor, show of hands, please. And that is a unanimous vote to carry that motion. The amended application is so approved. Thank you. Panel moves along to number sixteen.
Item sixteen was deferred, and item seventeen, the file was closed, so we're on to item eighteen.
There we are. Sixteen was deferred, seventeen withdrawn, we go to number eighteen. Eighty-six, Annette Street, before the panel. Applicant materials submitted, cover letter, agent for November, and a previous committee And on this application, we shall ask the agent to join us, please. State your name.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Michael Sedillo. I'm a registered professional planner at the Lake Shore Group located at Ten Morrison Street, Toronto.
Good day to you, Michael. Okay. Very good. Panel members, any questions on this? Ms. Chan, go ahead.
Yes, a small question. Just like to know the, what is the use of the existing building that going to be converted to the office?
So between 2003 and 2020, the subject building was used as an accessory bereavement and counseling office space for the adjacent funeral home. Since then, that use is not currently in place.
So it's never been used as residential purpose?
Prior to 2003, it was purely residential use. Our client has owned it since about 1968, so between then and 2003, it was residential.
Other questions for the applicant panel? Hearing none, we can take this application, I think, into committee for a motion. Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is one of those situations where the structure in question has been part of the funeral home for a very long time, and I think it would be quite appropriate for it to be, for this variance to be legalized in a sense. So I'd be quite happy to move a motion to approve.
Motion to approve there. Thank you. Second to that motion, it is seconded. Mr. Reed. So moved and seconded to approve. Those in favor, please, show of hands. And that motion is carried by a unanimous vote. Number eighteen is so approved. Taking us along to number nineteen, 124 Boone Avenue. On 124 Boone, the only materials that the committee has to work with are those submitted by the application with their application. We'll ask the agent to join us, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Bruno Loeb from MXL Engineering, and I'm the agent for the owner.
Good day to you. Okay, thank you. Panel members, any questions for the agent? Hearing none. Let's take this application into committee now for a motion. Mr. Reed, go ahead.
There's only two variances being requested, and the first one is because of the width of the law, and I think that's completely acceptable. And then the height variance is, I think, truly minor. I respect the fact that the applicant has made efforts to make the rest, the remainder of the application compliant with the bylaw. So I think the two variances being requested don't have a negative impact on the neighbors or on the alley that it's adjacent to. So I move to approve the application, subject to the regular development engineering, laneway suite conditions.
Thank you. Does that motion have a second? It is seconded. Mr. Byatt? So it is moved and seconded to approve the application. Those in favor? Thank you. That motion is carried by a unanimous vote, and number nineteen is so approved.
Thank you.
Very good. Number twenty, 22 East York Avenue. For 22 East York Ave, there are the submission materials before us, cover letter from February ten from the agent, and there are six form letters that support the application, signed by owners and occupants at 20, 24, 26, 30, and 32 East York Avenue, and 35 McPhail Ave. Okay, so we'll ask the agent to join us, please. Simply state your name.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Jay Smith. I am the agent for the application at 22 East York Avenue.
Good day. All right, then. Panel members, would you like a presentation here? Are there any- Are there any questions with, would you like to put to the, put to this applicant? I have a question. I was concerned about soft landscaping on this, on this application. I know the site is limited in its potential that way, but there really is very, very little soft landscaping, even from the potential. Did you consider ways in which that could be mitigated?
We did, Mr. Chair. One of the biggest issues we were running into for the soft landscape area was the fact that we're going to have almost no natural light, so things like planting, lawn, anything like that, isn't really an option. We would absolutely be amenable to putting in permeable paving, should the committee so choose.
Would you be willing, there's quite a, there's a chunk of, are you talking about replacing the concrete with permeable pavers?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we would replace the existing paving with permeable.
That could be a move in the right direction. And can you estimate how large, how large that, you know, not estimate, maybe we can go to the site plan, please? Can we zoom in there on? Okay, applicant, perhaps you could comment where that replacement of concrete with permeable pavers might be?
We would replace where the proposed carport is, as well as where the hatched area currently says paving, which is 4.13 square meters. Like I said, we can, you know, convert that to soft landscaping, should the committee so choose. I just, you know, other than putting in mulch or something like that, we're not going to end up with much natural light and much ability for anything to really grow there. But, yeah, we would replace where the carport is, plus where the area that says paving is, as natural, or as permeable paving.
Other questions for the applicant panel? Mr. Byatt, go ahead.
Just to clarify again, the carport would be essentially open, it's not a fully enclosed garage as your neighboring structures, I assume, and therefore, if you had permeable paving on the ground that the car would be parked upon, that would certainly allow for drainage, is that, is that my understanding, including the area called identified as paving?
That is correct. The sides are completely open, so it is just a roof structure.
And you'd be happy with the, that as a condition?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so there's really two areas, then, if I have this right. One area, the proposed carport, that could be replaced, concrete becomes permeable pavers. The second area is... How would we refer to that? If a condition was being applied to it?
If I may, Mr. Chair, it could be described as the remainder of the rear yard area, because other than that, we have the basement walkout and a deck. So it could be basically the remainder of the rear yard.
Okay, there any further questions, panel, for the applicant? Don't appear to be. In that case, we can take the application into committee for a motion. Ms. Chan, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'd like to move for approval with the condition, but I'd like to rephrase it a little bit differently, is to put permeable pavers at the floor of the carport, and also they replace the existing concrete paving in the rear yard to be also permeable pavement. That's more clear, I think.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? That motion is seconded by Mr. Byatt. Let's just check whether staff have captured it. Staff have that motion, have it down, okay. So it is moved and seconded to so approve the application. Those in favor, show of hands, please. Okay. That vote carries the motion, and the application is so approved. Thank you very much. Okay. So, with that, the morning agenda is completed, and the committee will now recess until 2:00 PM, at which time we'll resume on application number twenty-one, which is 31 Burt Mount Avenue. So committee now going into recess until 2:00 PM this afternoon. Thank you very much.